Good evening, welcome to the January twenty first, twenty twenty five voting meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Mr. Feig, could you take roll call, please?
Jason Mill.
Here.
Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Deborah Bloom.
Present.
Dr. Andrea Battler. John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Present.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Travis Odom.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the eight board members in attendance this evening, we are also joined at the board table by our solicitor Sharon Montane and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Christie Haller, superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris, assistant superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt, director of teaching and learning, Mrs. Diane Skornavaki, director of human resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our business administrator and board secretary. Next, we're going to move on to superintendent's report with Dr. Haller.
Thank you, Ms. Romell. I'd like to welcome our junior high staff, many of them sitting here in the audience with us. We have a fun night planned. We have, it's going to kick off with a special dedication to our school board. As, as we know, on the school board is very highly paid and compensated for the work. So, just as a little minor token of our appreciation for everything that you do, Jen Breton, our PR director, has put together a cute little video for your viewing enjoyment.
I know they sit there for hours and hours and listen to other people talking, and then when they have something to say, they'll say something. But I know they talk about like issues that are happening in schools and stuff like that.
We want to capture this whole moment.
Just looking into some audio things.
I know they sit there for hours and hours and listen to other people talking, and then when they have something to say, they'll say something. But I know they talk about like issues that are happening in schools and stuff like that.
We might have to restart it, Joe, because we want to capture this whole moment.
Just looking into some audio things.
Let it sound a little louder. I know they sit there for hours and hours and listen to other people talking, and then when they have something to say, they'll say something. But I know they talk about like issues that are happening in schools and stuff like that.
We might have to restart it, Joe, because we want to capture this whole moment.
Just looking into some audio things.
I know they sit there for hours and hours and listen to other people talking, and then when they have something to say, they'll say something. But I know they talk about like issues that are happening in schools and stuff like that. But, yeah.
I don't know. Mom goes in there. Oh, I don't know what she's doing.
A school board member kind of, um, like tells like different things and like sets up kind of like rules. I don't know, something like that.
They help out the school in big decisions, and they help teachers and help fix things that aren't, need to be fixed. Yeah.
Help situations where, um, peo-, uh, other staff members don't really know what to do and, uh, just like help out everywhere.
Well, to me, they make the decisions for the entire township, you know, to benefit all, you know, make the schedule. Just really make the, you know, your learning experience better overall.
They decide things for the school?
I don't know, I also didn't.
I have no idea.
They make decisions and rules for the school?
A school board member helps make decisions for the school district and make the school district better.
Um, well, they're like the, the IGL, you know, you know what that is?
He's old.
Uh, the brains of the school. You know, they make the decisions and they're important. Thanks, Dad, and thanks to all the other school board members on the board for helping the school.
Thank you, Mom, so much, and thank you for all the school board members for everything you do.
Thank you, school board members.
I just want to say thank you to my mom, Allison Wilson, along with all the other school board members. You know, I, I know it's definitely not an easy task, you know, with the amount of effort you put in every week, every day. So, just want to send a thank you to you guys.
Thank you, Dad.
Uh, thank you to everybody, and especially my dad who helps out.
Thank you to all the other school board members. Thank you to our principals.
Thank you, Mom.
Thank you, Dad. Thank you to everybody on school board. Thank you, Christie. Yeah, thank you for what you guys do.
So, there is a distinct poss-, a strong possibility that people have no idea what you do. But-
That includes me.
Yeah. But we do wanted to say thank you, and we thought it would be nice, this was Jen Breton's idea, but being on the school board does take you away from your families and, and a lot of other interests that you have or things that you could be- So, um, we just want to thank you for your dedication to the school district and, and helping us be a great place for families and, and for their, their children. So, thank you for all your hard work and dedication. So, that is, was our little surprise, and we will send you a copy of the video so you can cherish it forever. And, um, I also would like to, uh, just update the community as to where we are with this, uh, weather. Um, as you know, we did have a snowstorm, uh, that did impact our, our roads over the last several days. I would like to thank, uh, the township, especially Larry Pierceall, and of course, those at Saint Lawrence, who have been working extremely hard to, uh, make sure the roads are safe and clear. And, uh, living here for such a long time, I live in, in Pathfinder Woods, my development is actually really clear, um, and they did a great job with it. Um, but as you know, we've called for a two-hour delay just because of the fact there is very cold temperatures tomorrow. There are kids that are going to be standing at bus stops. But we still are dealing with some snow-covered roads in the township unbelievably, even though, um, they are working very hard. There's just been a lot of drifting, and because of the extreme temperatures, uh, the products, the ice-melting products that they use are actually not working, and they won't work, and we, and we knew that because they won't work, uh, below a certain degree. And I think tomorrow morning, it's, it's supposed to be like three degrees. Um, so that's why we called the two-hour delay to give our bus drivers a little bit more time to navigate these roads and, um, so they can do it in the light because there are ice patches everywhere. And Kai was driving around this, uh, this afternoon, this morning, this afternoon, this evening, and she sent me this picture. If Jo, Jo could bring it up, you can't bring it up.
Can you send it again?
Sure. Just to kind of give you an idea as to what, I'm going to tech, can I text it to you?
Yes.
Okay. Give you an idea of what these, um, roads are, are looking like right now. Uh, and for those people that live in the community, those members of the community, you know which roads I'm talking about. Did it come through, Joe?
Nope.
I just say it's the community to visualize what that road might look like. Just think about it in your head.
I did send it to him, but it did not go through. So, well, like I said, we do have a road that is completely covered in, um, snow right now, and it's, it's one lane. And so, it's, uh, up towards the mountain, and it's just very hard for our buses to navigate. So, out of an abundance of caution for our students, we just really needed to have the two-hour delay to make sure they can get kids safely to and from school. So, so thank you, and that's, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Haller. Thank you for that presentation. It was, uh, it was enlightening.
It was riveting.
It was, it was, it was enlightening, for sure. Um, I would like to announce that the board did meet in an executive session, uh, prior to this meeting to discuss personnel related to the Act ninety-three contract renewal. Um, and then moving on, public comments on agenda items. No one has signed up unless someone would like to come up and speak. All right, seeing no one. Uh, we are going to move on to meeting minutes. If there are no objections, we'll adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from the December fourth, twenty twenty four board reorganization meeting and committee of the whole meeting, as well as the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four board voting meeting. Okay, hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Uh, treasures report and payment requests. If there are no objections, we'll adopt a motion to approve the December twenty twenty four treasures report and payment request dated December eighteenth, twenty twenty four to January twenty first, twenty twenty five. Okay, hearing no objections, the treasures report and payment requests are approved. And we're going to move on to committees, starting with education with Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, we're going to start this evening with a data presentation. Yep, Dr. Hoyt, Dr. Alcarro, Mrs. Bush.
So, every year, we, uh, provide the board an update as far, uh, as where we are, um, as far as our, our data, our district data. And we believe that it's important for our community to have an awareness of what our student data looks like, and then more importantly, the plans that we have in place and where we're going with things. Um, this year, our data was delayed because the state's release of the data was significantly delayed. Uh, so, uh, that's why typically we do this in the fall, but we pushed it back, uh, to the winter. So, if we could go to the next slide, Joe. So, the areas that we are going to be talking about tonight align with our comprehensive plan, and, uh, the data that you're going to be seeing tonight really goes along with the comprehensive plan for, for the last several years. Uh, but we just recently submitted and to the state our new comprehensive plan, and you can see in the presentation that we are continuing to focus on ELA, which was a focus in our last plan, math, again, a focus in our last plan, and graduation. And we have identified, uh, targets within each of those categories that align more so with what state expectations are. So, if we could go to the next slide. In order to meet those expectations, one of the, uh, strategies that the district adopted once I became superintendent was the framework called Cycle of Improvement. That's a framework that the state uses, and the state actually directs schools to use the cycle of improvement when they are not, uh, meeting state targets. We are, our district is meeting state targets, and, but that framework is very important. I see as very important for our staff to be able to have a regular cycle where we are looking at our student data, we're looking at, um, what we're teaching students, and then we're coming back to that student data to make sure that we are, um, teaching what students need and what's aligned to state assessments. And that changes because students' needs change. And even though our, um, the pandemic has been over for a number of years, uh, this current fourth grade class was your kindergarten group, um, that first year that we were back. So, in March, when everything kind of shut down, those were the group of kids that, if they were in a pre-K, that ended abruptly for them, and then they came back that following year to the district. And as you recall, um, Exeter did, uh, half-Ds, and then we did some other things before we eased students back in. So, they are that, they are that last group. And so, that has definitely, as we've seen across the country, has impacted student learning and gaps that students ha- have had over the years. So, if we can go to the next slide. So, we are currently in phase two. We basically looked at setting the direction, we assessed needs, and now we are working on creating a plan and implementing that plan. So, each of our buildings has a school improvement team that they will work with. Our building principals will lead under the direction of Dr. Hoyt, our director of teaching and learning, to help them look at our student data, identify goals, and then work to implement a plan to meet those goals. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hoyt, um, and let him start to talk about some other areas, and then his team will start to talk about our student data.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Um, as we go through the data tonight, um, a couple of different people are going to come up here. Myself, Dr. Joel Caro, our secondary curriculum supervisor, and Becky Bush, our elementary curriculum supervisor. Uh, a lot of the themes that you're going to hear from us as a teaching and learning t- team tonight is, uh, one, we need to get better. You're going to hear that a lot, that we, we need to get better, we need to improve, and we need to continue to strive for excellence. Uh, another thing you're going to hear from the team tonight are there are some results that we're very proud of and, and we'd like to celebrate. Um, but then you're also going to hear us talk about that there are some results that we're disappointed in, and we definitely need to improve. So, um, as you talk about the cycle of improvement, um, this isn't something that you just do and it's done with. Uh, this is a framework that we are going to continue. Um, it's cyclical, no, no pun intended. Uh, you continue to reva-, uh, evaluate, adapt, move forward, make changes as necessary. And one of the other things you're going to hear from this group is that there are changes that we're going to be looking to put into place moving forward to address some of our concerns and some of our needs as well. So, Joe, you can go to the next slide. So, the data sources that, um, we're going to highlight this evening are, first, when we talk about our secondary data, you're going to hear us talk about the college board. Dr. Alcarro is going to talk a little about our college board data, specific to certain data points there. The bulk of the information this evening is going to be coming from the Future Ready Index. And, uh, this is a great tool, uh, for the school board, for all of our educators, and all of our community members, um, in Exeter Township. It is the portal for which that you can view, um, the district and school data in a very granular level. It's a public viewing, you don't have to log in for anything. Um, we're going to provide the link to the community. When you click on it, you just state what is your role. Are you a parent? Are you a community member? Are you an educator? And then from there, you can look up any school district in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to take a look at their achievement data, their attendance data, and any data related to the Future Ready Index. So, um, we're going to help to walk the board and the community through each one of our buildings tonight to highlight that data. Um, and then Mrs. Bush will come up, uh, when we get into our K to two data to talk about Akadience. Uh, and she will give a point of reference of what Akadience is. Uh, this is an assessment tool that we use for, um, in, uh, reading, and it really helps for us for identifying, uh, where kids are at and what are some needs to move forward. You can go to the next slide. So, we're going to start off with our secondary first, and then we will move into our elementary. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Joel Caro, our secondary curriculum supervisor.
Hi, everybody. Um, I was here a couple of weeks ago. Um, Joe, you can go to the next slide. Um, and a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the Swearing Eagle, myself and Mr. Campbell. Um, during that time, uh, we were putting together, you know, kind of what the program of studies would look like for next year. Um, if you remember, during that time, we were talking about the addition of, um, some, uh, AP courses, along with a, another dual enrollment course, a, a unique opportunity that we have with Immaculata University, uh, which I'll, I'll talk about here in a second. Um, and if you look up here, these are, these are some numbers to celebrate. Um, so, the first one is the graduation rate. So, if you look at the, the board, you'll see we are above the state average when it comes to our graduation, graduation rate, excuse me. Um, graduation, uh, is a, is a culmination of everything that a student does, uh, K through twelve. Um, it takes a village for many students to graduate from high school. Um, there are many people that are involved in this process. I know, I see that. No, I think it's just-
Hey, hey, John, can you go on mute?
I'm just going to keep going and see what happens. We're just going to roll with it. So, graduation, um, you can see, we are above, uh, state, state average, but we, we are going to continue to focus on this as part of our comprehensive plan, uh, going forward because that, that is what we are here to do. We are here to graduate students and help them into the next phase of their lives, um, be that the, the workforce, uh, military, um, or post-secondary education, it doesn't matter. Uh, we put together, um, as a, a secondary, uh, you know, education, um, group, a, a plan for every student, the counselors at the high school and at the junior high school, um, along with the teachers and the administration worked very hard on this. Um, it, it, like I said, it is a, a collaborative effort, and I'm very proud to be a part of that. Um, you can also see the, the total number of students, um, up there taking, um, AP exams. Um, this is one of our highest percentages of students, um, taking and passing AP exams within the past, um, four years. We also had, uh, five percent, um, of our students, um, taking, um, five or more AP exams in four years. Um, five percent of the class, um, this past year. Um, so, what we're seeing here is an increase of the rigor that students are taking and also the performance that they are, uh, experiencing while taking those AP exams. Um, so, when you look at that, those numbers, um, there's a lot of success to be celebrated. Um, not to mention, we had a hundred and thirty-five, um, students who earned a total of seven hundred and fifty-nine credits, um, through our RAC dual enrollment program. So, our RAC dual enrollment program is one of the, um, oldest programs, um, through dual enrollment here in the county. Um, it's been around now for over fifteen years. Um, seven hundred and fifty-nine credits is a significant amount of credits for students to be walking out of high school with, um, in one year. Um, and we are looking at a very significant, um, and similar number this year. Um, these numbers have pretty much stabilized, um, over the last couple of years due to the, the teachers, um, at the high school, as well as the counselors and the administration making certain that students are taking the highest level, uh, of academic coursework that they can take and that they can handle in a given day. I will just add, um, as I was here two weeks ago, we are looking at increasing our course catalog for our AP courses with AP Environmental Science, uh, and AP Seminar. And as I mentioned, we are looking at adding one and, one dual enrollment course, which is not a RAC course. It is through Immaculata University with the orientation of teaching that myself and Mr. Campbell talked about last week. Okay, that's it for me.
All right, Joe, you can go to the next slide. Uh, so, now what we're going to start doing is, um, diving into each of the schools. Uh, we're going to start with taking a look at their historical achievement data, uh, related to language arts, mathematics, and science, um, in relation to years previous, uh, in achievement, as well as with respect to this, uh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Um, to give the board and the community some context here, uh, the, these results are based off the Keystone exams. Um, the Keystone exams are not grade-based, they are course-based. Um, and then the data gets reported at the end of the eleventh grade year for that class. So, for, for math, it's an Algebra One assessment. For language arts, it's an, a language arts assessment, and for science, it's a biology assessment. Depending on when that student takes that course, their score gets banked and then gets reported there in eleventh grade. Um, one thing to note for math, uh, you see there's an asterisk there. Uh, a lot of people ask like, what happened with math? Um, the state, because Algebra One, we have students take it as early as sixth grade and as late as eleventh grade, and that's true across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, it's dependent upon when they take it. Um, this is the last year of the COVID waiver. So, this eleventh grade class had roughly around twenty-five students who would have taken Algebra One. As a, a seventh grader, um, in the spring of two thousand and twenty, whose score was then waived, um, research will tell you, the earlier you take Algebra One, the higher likely you are to score in that course. So, we have roughly about twenty-five or so students missing from both our denom- numerator and denominator for that. So, next year, we'll get the first true representation of a cohort for Algebra One data. Um, but as you can see there for language arts, um, we did increase from the previous year. Um, math, we, we did make an increase, and again, we're still have, uh, about twenty-five or so scores that we'll look for for next year. Uh, and then unfortunately, in biology, um, we did, we did drop. So, what I'm going to do is, um, and then we're going to leave the presentation. Joe has a tab open here, uh, for the high school future ready. I'm going to show you what this looks like to give you context, because this is how we are rated as a district. Um, this is what all of the, uh, the different, um, newspapers and such pull from, is the future ready, uh, to give both you and the community an idea of what some of this information means. So, this is the, um, school performance data for the senior high school. Again, this is related to the Keystone exams. The very first row gives you expected achievement on there. Um, the colors mean, green means you met your expectation for achievement. Red means you did not meet your expectation for achievement, and blue means you exceeded your expectation for achievement. So, you can see there for language arts and math, we met our expectation, um, but for biology, we did not. So, um, you're going to hear that biology, um, is an area of concern. It's an area, uh, the, we are targeting. We're tar-, all of our areas, I've said, we want to make an improvement in, but for biology, uh, is an area that we are going to look to really dive deeper, to see what we can do to, to get some increases there. Um, for your own reference and for the community, if they wish to do so, this is a very interactive site. I'm not going to do this here, but, um, you can click on the various links there, student group breakdown, and it will show you how did the student groups do in the building. If you have twenty or more in what's designated as a subgroup, it counts as a subgroup in your, uh, in your data. So, for, just to give context for us, um, white students are considered a subgroup because we have greater than twenty white students. Hispanic students are considered a subgroup because we have greater than twenty, and such. So, if you remember, last year, um, we had to bring forth to the board, uh, a, what was known as a TSI, a Targeted School Improvement Plan to the board for approved because, um, our- And again, we're still have about 25 or so scores that we'll look for, for next year. And then unfortunately, in biology, we did, we did drop. So what I'm going to do is, and then we're going to leave the presentation. Joe has a tab open here for the high school future ready. I'm going to show you what this looks like to give you context, because this is how we are rated as a district. This is what all of the, the different newspapers and such pull from is the future ready to give both you and the community an idea of what some of this information means. So this is the school performance data for the senior high school. Again, this is related to the Keystone exams. The very first row gives you expected achievement on there. The colors mean, green means you met your expectation for achievement. Red means you did not meet your expectation for achievement. And blue means you exceeded your expectation for achievement. So you can see there for language arts and math, we met our expectation. But for biology, we did not. So you're going to hear that biology is an area of concern. It's an area the, we are targeting. We're, all of our areas, I've said, we want to make an improvement in. But for biology is an area that we are going to look to really dive deeper to see what we can do to, to get some increases there. For your own reference and for the community, if they wish to do so, this is a very interactive site. I'm not going to do this here, but you can click on the various links there, student group breakdown, and it will show you how did the student groups do in the building. If you have 20 or more in what's designated as a subgroup, it counts as a subgroup in your, in your data. So for, just to give context for us, white students are considered a subgroup because we have greater than 20 white students. Hispanic students are considered a subgroup because we have greater than 20 and such. So if you remember, last year, we had to bring forth to the board a, what was known as a TSI, a Targeted School Improvement Plan to the board for approved, because our high school was designated for the subgroup, students with disabilities, as not meeting their targeted areas. I am happy to tell you that the high school was not designated this year, nor was any school in, in our district as well, which there were a number of schools in the county that were designated for various reasons, we were not. But again, we still have a tremendous amount of room for improvement here. But that gives you achievement. Below is, is growth. And growth is one of these things that can sometimes be fairly confusing to people. Growth doesn't mean just getting better on a previous score. The state uses a very sophisticated statistical formula to make this determination. I'm not going to get into the math on that, even though math is my background and I would bore you to death with statistics on that. But to, to keep it simple, what this, what this tells you is that students come in with a projection. They look at all of the assessments that students took historically, and they say, all right, based upon this, these students should have a score of this. If that group of students hits that score, they considered maintaining. If they exceeded that score, they are in the blue. They, they overly exceeded their expectation. And if they did not hit that expected projection and were below that, that's where you see the red. So for our language arts, our students made a year's worth of growth in the classroom. In math, we exceeded. What that tells you is that the group of students made more than one year's growth in that, and, and during the course of the year. And in biology, they did not make a year's worth of growth. So again, you can also go through the breakdown of, of subgroups with that. The easiest way to make an analogy for this is that, I, I tell people it's similar to running, right? If you have a group of students who are running a 10-minute mile, right? They come into your class running a 10-minute mile. The state is telling you that those kids have to run a five-minute mile by the end of the year. If you get them to run a seven-minute mile, you didn't hit the expectation of the state, but you tremendously grew them based upon where they were at. That's what student growth is. That's the best layman's term I can give. So, so that is the high school future ready data. So we're going to go back into the presentation, go to the junior high.
Dr. Hoyt.
Yes.
Is there a, do we talk about the improvement plan later in the presentation, or is that?
Yes.
All right, I don't, I don't, I have a question, but I don't want to jump the gun.
Yeah, what we're going to do moving forward from here?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, that, at the end, we talk about what, what are areas we're looking at? What are things we've done and what are things we're going to continue to do?
Yep. I'll save my question then. Thank you.
Okay, yep. So if you can advance the slide, Joe. So here we have the junior high school. The junior high school is measured not by Keystone exams, but by PSSAs. Those PSSAs are a combination of two grades. Because our junior highs are grade seven and a grade eight, they take the two scores and they combine them together. So that is an average in relation to the grade seven and grade eight language arts, the grade seven and grade eight math PSSA. And then for science, it's just eighth grade science. There is no PSSA in seventh grade, there's only an eighth grade PSSA. So for language arts, you see that's a three-year history there. We went down, then we, we increased. For math, we are steadily increasing. You're going to hear us talk about math a little bit at the end here. And then for science, again, we increased, then we decreased. So again, science, you're going to hear some things with regards to science and what we are going to be doing moving forward with that. So what we're going to do is we're going to go into the future ready for the junior high school. And again, this is grade seven, grade eight PSSAs. The very first row is related to achievement. And again, the red means that we did not meet the expectations for achievement in ELA and math and science. And again, those are for a combination of the two grades, grade seven and grade eight. So then if you scroll to the bottom, when we start to talk about growth, although we are not meeting the expectation for achievement in language arts, we are growing our kids. We made a year's worth of growth within that cohort of seven and eighth grade. However, in math and science, not only did we not achieve, but we also didn't grow them. So that is an area of obvious concern of where we need to make some significant improvements there, because it's one thing to not have kids achieve, but if they're also not growing as well, that's where we have to start to intervene. And we're going to talk about what we're going to do for there. We're going to go back into the presentation now for Reifden. And Reifden are grades five and six. So again, it's a combination of the two grades. We only have language arts and math. But we did put in the note here, the state did make some changes for science. Historically, the PSSA was given in grades four, eight, and then there was a Keystone Biology exam. And now the state has determined, in addition to mandating that all states implement the new Pennsylvania Steel Standards, additionally, now there's no longer a PSSA in grade four. Effective this year, the PSSA is now in grade five.
I have a question.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Brian. Josh, could you go back to the junior high school, the first chart?
The future ready or the slide deck?
I, I guess the slide deck. I'm following along at home, but I, I don't know which.
Okay.
It comes back to the very first junior high school.
Can you go to the junior high, Joe?
Slide.
Okay. We have the junior high slide up, up on the screen.
Oh, okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing it at home.
There's a little bit of a delay.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll wait.
Imagining that road in my head.
You said that, you said that the, we're improving in math and algebra, but you said something, something like, you know, we have a lot of work to do. Why are the scores so low? I guess that's my question, is why? Why are these scores so low?
There's not a singular reason as to why these scores are so low. You know, you're going to hear like through elementary, when we did, you know, I'll give you an example, when we looked at fourth grade in math, it was very evident across the district that all of fourth grade was performing. We were missing something in the area of measurement, specifically measurement of larger unit to a smaller unit. That tells us that there's definitely, it's just not, it, it's missing in the curriculum. We had to implement that and put in a plan for that. When you look specifically at our grade seven and our grade eight math data, and you get down to the reporting categories, there's not a singular reporting category, whether it's equation and expressions, probability and data analysis, algebra, operations with algebraic expressions, whichever you get into, that is performing greater than or less than the other. They're all relatively performing around that 50% rate, which tells you that we are, we're teaching it. But what's not happening is this is not getting to the taught, to the level of what's expected when the students are taking these assessments. So you're going to hear us trying to do, like some of the work we're trying to do to improve that. It is, in my opinion, it is not a lack of student knowledge per se. What it is, is that we have to continue to make sure that what's being instructed is what's expected at the end of the year. Because not everything that's in algebra, or not everything that's in grade seven or grade eight math, is on that end-of-the-year assessment. So, you know, to, to give you a, a very blunt answer, is that we know that it is low and that we have to do a better job of analyzing what's working, not working, what's missing, and making sure that what's going in front of students is what's expected at the end of the year. Because there's, there is, somewhere there's a gap. And that's where we're continuing to keep doing that analysis.
Dr. Hoyt, talking about the junior high and, and the mathematics right now of what's going on, these students during COVID would have been in the third and fourth grade. Would that have had any impact as their learning ability as they move through the grades? Because of the, you know, at third and fourth grade levels, you're, you're having some different kind of conversations from a math perspective that builds into this in seventh and eighth grade. Is, was there fundamentals that were not maybe grasped to be able to get to the point they are in seventh and eighth grade? Or is this just strictly what they've learned through all seventh and eighth grade?
Well, I mean, math is definitely foundational. When you get into those courses, you are, you know, when I was a math teacher, they used to tell you that, they called fractions, decimal, percents, the lions, tigers, and bears of getting ready for algebra, right? And that's a lot of things that are taught in grades three to six. I will play devil's advocate on that and say that if that was a concern for us, that would have been a concern for the state as well. And when you look at the state average, we are well below the state average there. So that tells me that it is more of an exeter problem than it is a more broader problem. And I'm sorry, Mr. Fiddler, I, I think you had a follow-up question?
I, I do, if I may. What, what exactly, let's look at the 23, 24. My image is a little fuzzy here. The state is 40-point-something, and we're what, 36-point-something?
Yes.
What, what do those percent, 40% of what, or 30% of what? What, what does that percentage represent?
So that is the combination of grades seven and eight students for us, because we have those two grades related to their percent proficiency, a combination of that. So then what the state does is, is they look at the combination across of all seventh and eighth graders across the Commonwealth and make a comparison to that.
Right, but I mean, 40%. You know, it reminds me of the old saying, if you set, if you set the bar low enough, everybody can step over it. If only 40% of the students across the state are doing what? Doing math at grade level or fill in that sentence for me?
So it's a combination of what was expected at the end of grade seven and what was expected at the, the end of grade eight. They're not equal proportions, because the number of seventh-grade students doesn't equal the number of eighth-grade students. So I couldn't tell you what the denominators for those two are. But what that says is that 40% of all combined seventh and eighth-grade students, that was their percent average between their seventh-grade proficiency and their eighth-grade proficiency.
Yeah, okay, I, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it, but it just, these, these are not good numbers.
I don't disagree with you there.
And what are, what are we doing to fix it?
So you're, we're, at the end here, we're going to talk about our plan to improve, what we're, we're going to do with regards to a number of things. So we're going to talk about that at the end, and certainly I'll answer any follow-up questions with regards to that.
Yeah, because here, here's what's happening, Josh, since before you got here. But four years ago, most of our seventh graders couldn't do math at grade level. It was 50-some percent. And it seems like over the course of the last four years, not much has happened.
Well, and, and that's, I can tell you, seventh-grade math, there, to say what's expected at the end of seventh grade is, is hard to quantify, because we have a larger-than-not percentage in a seventh-grade class. We have a larger-than-not percentage in a pre-algebra class, and then we have other students who are in a Algebra I course. So depending on where you have Algebra I, you are getting a combination of the Algebra I curriculum in conjunction with the grade-level curriculum. So if you're in a junior high Algebra I student, you're having two different curricula, where you have to take two different assessments end of the end of the year. Teachers are teaching from two different curricula, have to make sure both parts are in there. It is one of the most challenging grade levels to teach in the Commonwealth.
All right, okay, thank you very much.
So what we will do is go back to Reifden. And again, as I mentioned, Reifden is grades five and six. Our first column there is language arts. And again, you can see that we increased and we decreased. For math, again, you see increasing, I, I will call that a flat line almost. And then in science, there's a, no data for that. And just FYI, for next year for science, the science assessment for the first year, they're going to collect a lot of data on that, and we will get a percentage proficiency on that. But there's a plan for what that's going to look like, and I'll talk about that next year when we get to it. So what we'll do is hop into the future ready for Reifden. And again, this is for achievement and expected achievement. So for language arts and mathematics, we did not meet the expectations for achievement. However, if you look below, we are maintaining, we are growing our kids in language arts, and we are exceeding. We are, we are growing students in math by more than one, one grade level within there. So again, it's, it's, this is data that's telling us that our students are coming in and performing at a certain level, which we need to increase. However, in math, we are then taking where students are at that level, and we are substantially increasing them by the end of their experience at Reifden. Going to hop back over to the presentation now. We're going to drop, jump into our three elementary schools. We're going to start with Jacksonwald Elementary. And one thing I do want to mention about, one thing I did not mention earlier is that, you know, when I talked about our subgroups, and, and one of our subgroups that we have in every single building is economically disadvantaged. That population is growing significantly in our school district. Most of our schools, almost all of them are at least 40%. Jacksonwald is 60%. They are the greatest in comparison to our other schools. So this is our, our, our school that has our, our greatest economically disadvantaged population. However, again, that's, for us, expectations are expectations, and we're looking to improve. So for Jacksonwald, this is grades three and four. We are, our buildings are K to four, they take PSSAs in grades three and four, so it's a combination of those two grades. When you take a look at our language arts, again, fairly flat line. Math, fairly flat line. Science, we made some increases. So we'll go into future ready for Jacksonwald. And as you can see, for our top row, for language arts, math, and science, we did not meet the expectation for achievement for language arts and math. We did meet the expectation for achievement for science. But when you scroll below, we are significantly, significantly growing children at Jacksonwald. So to give some context here for our elementary, which you're going to hear as a theme, one thing that's unique about that data at the bottom is that that's only fourth grade, because students do not get a growth score in third grade. They have no historical data to get that. So you don't get a growth projection until you are a fourth-grade student. So what that is telling you is that's what, that's what's occurring in fourth grade. So our fourth grade is significantly growing, but from our lens as a teaching and learning team and working with the buildings, is that, that's telling us is that students are not achieving where they need to achieve by the end of third grade. So they're coming in with a result, whatever that result is, we're growing them then by the time that they leave fourth grade. But it's going to tell us, we really need to take a look at what is happening in K to three, because there's no PSSAs in K to two. Specifically, first grade, you're going to hear us talk about that. First grade is probably the most important year in a child's education is first grade. But you just see that we are significantly growing our kids there at Jacksonwald.
Dr. Hoyt, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Or point this out? So this data is from fourth graders.
The growth data at the bottom. The, the, the row above is three and four.
Okay, fourth graders, for this data point, they're currently in fifth grade, correct?
Correct.
And these would have been your kindergarten, your COVID kids, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to go back into the presentation, and we're going to go to Lorraine. Oh, by the way, I should mention, Jacksonwald too is one of our two title elementary schools as well. Lorraine is our other Title I elementary school. Again, we're looking at language arts, math, and science. Language arts, we flatlined. Math, we went up, then we went down, but again, still relatively close. close. Science, again, we made some increases. So we'll go into the future ready for Lorraine. If you get a control shift T, it'll bring it back up.
Dr. Hoyt, why he's looking for that. You said economically disadvantaged, what is the parameters around that?
So it's based upon like census data and then we provide a survey for that for the poverty level that's given out. And then that data is then provided for us for things like free and reduced lunch, other programs within the district, so. All right, so this is Lorraine, looking at achievement. Again, you see we did not meet the expectation for achievement in language arts and math. But for achievement, we significantly exceeded the expectation for science. When you look at the growth at the bottom, again, very similar to Jacksonwald, that we are significantly growing our students in language arts, we're maintaining their growth, meaning they made a year's worth of growth in both their grades and, or in, in, in fourth grade. And then for science, we exceeded that growth. Can head back into the presentation. And then last school, Awatton Creek, again, grades three and four. Language arts making increases, math making increases, similar, almost flatlining but still a little bit of an increase. Science, we were up and down, and then again, we made significant increases. You can see across science, we, we made a lot of increases in science and that's something we'll talk about at the end as well. And then going into the future ready here, again, as a reminder, the top row is achievement, grades three and four. So we did not meet the expectation for achievement in language arts. For math, we met the expectation for achievement in grades three and four, and for science, we exceeded the expectation. But then again, you see across the bottom, we are significantly growing students there. So if you look at a theme there for elementary, we are not achieving, we're not meeting our expectation for achievement in many places, but we are exceeding their growth, which again, you're going to hear us talk about why we really, K to 12 is obviously a focus, but now we can start to hone in on areas and it's going to allow us to really hone in on K to three to see what's occurring there and how we can make some improvements, so.
Can we go up? Does it show us what the achievement, like what the expectation is?
So the state doesn't publish that because they have to do it individually for everyone. So you have to do an internal calculation with that, I can share that with you. Where they get that from is that they took your initial benchmark 2018 data for each one of those and the, when I talked about the comm plan, I mentioned this, and then they developed a 2033 goal. So then you had 15 years, whatever your benchmark data was, you had 15 years to make the increments to get to that 2033 goal. So districts have to hand calculate to figure out what those are. I can share those with the board.
Okay, so every district has their own goal?
They want everybody to be there by, they want everybody to be at 81.1% by the year of 2033. But your initial benchmark 2018 data is what sets the standard for years, so.
So that, I think that is confusing and misleading because when you go back up, if you could scroll up, Joe, there are areas within our data where, if you look, we've exceeded what the statewide average is, in some areas significantly so, like ELA at Awatton Creek. But yet, because of that calculation that is not made public, it appears as though that we are not meeting expectations, which is unfortunate that that's the way that they share that out, but that, that is the way it is. But again, in most areas within the district, we're exceeding or at least meeting what the statewide average is for our students. And one of the things to, obviously, you know, is interesting to do for the community is they have a great way for you to compare districts and that's something that people should look at, like how is Exeter faring against other districts? In some areas, we are, you know, doing much better, some areas, some other districts are doing better. Nationally, as John had mentioned about the math, nationally, math scores are down. This isn't like an Exeter thing, it is a nationwide thing. So we definitely need to look at our seventh grade math, but as he said, there's students that are actually learning two curriculums simultaneously and they're also taking two tests that we're expecting our kids, our seventh graders to take two state assessments. So that's, that's a lot of testing that they're doing. But that's, that's the rule, that's the expectation, that's what we have to abide by.
And I guess then, because I'm thinking our goal, I think it says something like 76% would be proficient in three years, so is that our goal? Like is that our number?
So that, that was when I did the calculations for that specific grade, yes. Yep. But that's, for that grade, remember, this is a grade span, so it's still going to be different because it's a combination of the two grades.
That was just third grade? I think that's what it was.
We did grade three, grade seven, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions before I move on? All right, we can go back into the presentation. And what I'm going to do now is turn it over to Mrs. Becky Bush, Arcata Six Curriculum Supervisor, who's going to talk to you about Arcata Two Benchmarking Data and Acadients.
Definitely not that tall, okay. All right, so good evening, everybody. We're going to take a look at the Jacksonwald, Lorraine, and Awatton Creek Acadients data next. And this data, the way that you look at this data is going to be a little bit different than how we just looked at the future ready, because the Acadia's data does not show us growth and it does not show us achievement. What we are going to be looking at are reading composite scores that help us to assess the risk and the support that our students need in their early literacy skills. And it's also going to help us to get a temperature check kind of on the health of our core. So, Joe, could you go to the first Acadia's tab that I sent you? So if you take a closer look at Acadia's, it is a universal assessment, a universal screener, which means all of the students in each of our classrooms, K, one, two, three, and four are given a battery of assessments. And the results of those tests help us to see, to identify students who may have reading difficulties later on, as well as to target the skill areas in which they need support. We are using Acadia's now in kindergarten through fourth grade and some of fifth grade in regular ed, and this year our special education, teachers have also begun using Acadia's in the elementary, and I believe it's up to eighth grade. This way we have consistency across the assessments that we are using to identify any reading difficulties our students may be working through. When I started here in Exeter as the supervisor of literacy and the curriculum K six, that's, we adopted Acadia's because of what we were noticing with the historical data of our PSSA data. We needed something, a tool that was going to help us to identify the areas where our students are showing struggles so that we can move forward and help the, our teachers to implement instructional practices that are going to move the students forward and give them a really strong core foundation for when they do approach the PSSA testing grades. So, Joe, can you flip to the second Acadia's tab now and scroll up? When you begin to look at the data from the elementary schools, you're going to be looking at something called the composite score. And when we look at Acadia's assessments, there are two types of scores that we look at. The first type of score is called a raw score. And a raw score is the result of the individual measures that we give at any given window, benchmarking window for our students. So they're the actual scores that students are achieving, working towards within that battery that they're, that they're taking. Those are the scores that the teachers are looking at so that they can target skill areas where students are showing strengths and struggles. The second type of score that Acadia's helps us to determine is a composite score. The composite score is basically the overall score of the combined raw scores. So you're looking at an estimate of where students are in their early literacy skills. I have this page linked in our, our presentation so that if you'd like to reference it at any time, you're able to see where those scores and where those benchmarks are coming from. One thing that I do want to point out, when I started speaking this evening, I mentioned that we're not looking at growth and we're not looking at achievement. That's because the Acadia's scores are not, the composite scores are not the same in every benchmarking window. Because the subtests that create those composite scores change, it's a moving target. So we're not using, we're using them to guide our instruction and make informed decisions for our students, but we're not using them to look at growth and compare across the school year for the composite scores. So, Joe, if you can go back to the data presentation?
So Becky, is the, is the data?
Why, I looked behind me.
Is the data live or is it a year in the rears?
No, this is the live data. This is what, we just finished our benchmarking window, January 3rd through the 10th.
So your first graders that we're seeing here are actually in first grade?
They are actually in first grade, yes.
Okay, which is different than the last presentation.
Yes, that is another really good point to make, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, so when we're looking at the kindergarten, the first and the second grade, keep in mind that we are using different, we're looking at different measures. Kindergarten, the measures that we're looking at are first sound fluency, phoneme segmentation fluency, and nonsense word correct letter sounds. So the skills that we're assessing students on is their ability to hear and manipulate the sounds in words, as well as their letter sound correspondences. In first grade, the raw scores that are comprising this composite score are nonsense word correct letter sounds, nonsense word, whole words read. Both of those subtests measure students' ability to correspond letters to sounds again, as well as measure the automaticity in which students are able to look at those sounds and blend them together to create a whole word. The other part that we're looking at in first grade is the oral reading fluency. This is the first time these students are being given passages during the assessment, not during instruction, where they were measuring their ability to read the words more automatically when they're put all together in a passage, as well as their ability to read them correctly and accurately. In second grade, we're measuring all oral reading fluency at this point in the school year in January. So the amount, the number of words students can read correctly, as well as how accurate they are in their reading them, I'm sorry, the number of words students can read fluently as well as accurately. But we also add to that oral reading fluency score a retell and a quality score, which is how much do the students remember from the passage that they just read? So it's a measure of comprehension, as well as what is the quality of that retell and how, how many details do they remember? So that's just an overview of what the scores that you're looking at, what the percentages that you're looking at. When you're looking at the white bar in the bar graph versus the blue bar, you're not looking at the students who can read versus the students who can't read. These are measures that are helping you to see how much, how at-risk students are for having future reading difficulties, as well as how much targeted support that they need. So when you're looking at the white bar, those are the students who are working below or well below those early literacy indicators. Those are the students who have a higher probability of having a reading difficulty later on if we do not target those skills in which they are struggling right now in, starting in January. And the blue bar shows us the number of students who are on or above in their data, and that is helping us to know that these are students that, what they're working with and now in their core, they're, they're showing success for future reading proficiencies. As Dr. Hoyt noted earlier, you will notice that our kindergarten and our second grade early literacy skills are showing more, more, to be more on target, whereas our first grade cohort of students, we have more students that are falling below and well below and will need some extra support. And that just helps us to know that we need to take a look at our instructional practices and our resources that we're using so that we can align them more closely with the skill sets that those students need to succeed. All right, we can go to Jack, or to Lorraine. As you look across the data at Lorraine, first grade is going to pop out at you again. It is, the, the white below, below bar is actually exceeding the amount of students that are on or above in first grade. We are very well aware of this and also grateful that we have a tool like Acadia's to help us identify this as soon as we have. If you remember back to last year at this time when we were presenting our data for kindergarten at Lorraine, we had the same cohort of students who, in our middle-of-the-year benchmark, really was struggling with some of those skills that we were teaching in kindergarten. We developed action plans with our teachers, collaborated with them, implemented some progress monitoring tools, and we started to implement that plan and those students bounced back. Now we have those same students in our first grade, and as those reading subtests are growing with difficulty, those students are showing us again that they need that support. So Friday at our professional development day, we worked together, all of our grade levels, with our principals, the reading teams in each of the building, and the ESL teachers. And in this grade specifically, we spent a lot of time creating, again, another action plan, shifting some of the practices that we're using, as well as spending a little bit more time in some of the skill areas with our reading and intervention specialists. And we will be progress monitoring these students so that we can assess to see if we caught them in, in time, which I am hopeful that that is the case. All right, let's go to our Awatton Creek data. So when you take a look, is that, okay, I was going to say, I thought it hurt a little bit.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Becky, two, two quick questions. The Acadia's, is that what used to be called DIBELS?
So yes and no. Acadia's and DIBELS are the same type of assessment, they're both universal screeners. However, the University of Oregon and some of the people who created, and I, I don't have the exact history on this, but I know that they all started together in DIBELS. And then the people who, as part of that group, created what is called DIBELS Next, which is a type of DIBELS assessment, they split from the University of Oregon, and now DIBELS and Acadia's are two separate assessments, but they measure very much the same things.
Uh huh, okay, thank you. And secondly, all of the benchmarks, if you will, or the milestones, the things that we're testing, are they all under the umbrella of science of reading?
Yes, absolutely. So all of the subtests and the individual measures are early indicators for reading success. And the way that we help those students to grow within those skills are by implementing structured literacy and evidence-based practices that fall under that body of evidence called the science of reading. So yes.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
With those numbers in first grade, are there any supports that you've added into like tier one supports, since basically a majority of students are, you know, falling below grade level?
Yes, absolutely. So we've done a couple of things in both kindergarten and first grade. One of the supports that we implemented this year is push-in support. So our reading team predominantly, even when I was in the classroom, we pulled students out of their environment, right? So when you do that, you're creating a disruption in, in their day. One thing that we noticed with our elementary students is, at the beginning of the year when we're establishing routines and we're trying to get them kind of into the swing of school, all of a sudden, they, they get it, and then we pull them out and disrupt their day. So one of the things that we've implemented is that push-in model, and we are noticing a difference in, in our data. In fact, last year in kindergarten was our first year where we did that with students, and that was the, the grade level that we started those push-in supports, and we saw, we saw very much growth in those students.
So, but I,
So, but I, I think what you're getting at, Allison, is that we believe that there's a core issue. So, I mean, you don't see, you don't see numbers like that unless it goes directly back to the core because you shouldn't have that many students in intervention. So even our Jacksonwald numbers align more so to the Owatton numbers. And Lorraine is definitely the outlier. But all indications point back to that this is an issue with the core. Because of what we primarily focus in on as first grade, where they're learning to read and a lot of that boils down to that, those decoding skills, we are closely looking at our use of foundations. That was heavily used in the county for, for years. And while you don't teach to a test, you also don't assess what you don't teach, you know, like in, in a certain regard. So we are looking at that program in, as using foundations. If that's, if we're using Acadia's and then we're teaching foundations, but then foundations doesn't align to what we're testing in Acadia's as to determine if students are acquiring those skills, then we have to think about what, what we're using and also what we're assessing. So as far as the, the science of reading and that structured reading piece as, as PA is starting to interpret it, we believe that foundations will be an accepted program. But there will also be other accepted programs as well. And we don't know, we assume that Acadia's will be the assessment that they promote, but it could be DIBELS. It could, you know, so we, we don't know, or they could promote something else. So we do have a benchmarking assessment aligned to what is expected. We are teaching phonemic awareness using Hegarty, which we believe is hitting the mark. And we're seeing it definitely in kindergarten. We are using foundations K through, K through two. But that is a program that is, plays a huge part in our core. And we believe that we need to start to, to look at, at that program because all the data is, is really similar. So there's, there's a miss somewhere. Which is exactly what Acadia's in part is designed to do, is to measure the health of your core. And that's saying that there's, there's something not right here.
So while I appreciate the concern, I do have a question. I mean, learning is cumulative. While I know nothing about education, I know statistics. Across the entire elementary board, you're seeing an 18%, a double-digit increase from first to second grade. So is it also fair to say that the work you're doing all year in first grade is coming to fruition as we see those results in second grade?
I mean, yeah, we would, yes, we would like to believe that that is, it's, it is compounding. And we're seeing it work at the end, work in second grade. Because again, the second grade scores across the three buildings, again, look similar. And in second grade, this assessment teaches oral reading fluency. So yes, our students are learning to read. That is in fact true. But we still don't want our first grade data to look the way that it's looking because again, it measures the health of our core. And we want to make sure that those numbers are in check. Because, I mean, honestly, you can't have that many kids also receiving intervention. So yes, it's true, our students are learn, learning to read. Yes, you can see it in the second grade data, but first grade is still gonna be a primary focus for us. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious why we don't hear as much about kindergarten, right? So like where's the, I'm looking at the improvement from first grade to second grade, but you're seeing great scores in kindergarten, but then not in first grade. So is there a miss in kindergarten as well that we're missing?
We don't believe, at this time, there's a, it's a miss in kindergarten. We believe that the issue is primarily in first grade with what we're teaching students in first grade. Again, it's not because students are coming out of first grade and going into second grade and not able to read. It's, we believe there might be a misalignment between the core and what we're assessing in Acadia's. So does that make more?
That makes a lot more sense. That, I didn't hear it that way the first time. So you're saying that there's, the data may be inaccurate as a result of how it's assessed.
Yeah, because, and obviously, again, you don't want to teach to a test, but you also want to make sure that what you're teaching is aligned to what you're assessing. And we don't believe that we're seeing that in first grade. So that's why that's a focus for us. And we already, like Becky said, we, we did meet, I didn't meet with the first grade teachers on Friday, but we did meet with the Lorraine teachers on Wednesday and sat down with them to hear their thoughts specifically on the data and where they believe that there were missteps. So I don't want people to walk away with us and think, oh my gosh, like, no one's learning anything in first grade at Lorraine and no one's learning anything in first grade across the district. Because obviously that is not the case because you can see, as you pointed out, kindergarten data, which is what we did last year, first grade data, which is what we did last year, and then second grade data, which is what essentially we did last year. But we just need to, to look at first grade as to what, what the issue is. And, and again, I, I believe that because of what they're assessing, it may have something to do with the use of foundations. Again, stellar program, but we're also using Acadia's. And not every district uses foundations and not every district uses Acadia's either.
I appreciate the explanation because that was my point. It doesn't make sense to say that we're doing all this work and then in second grade you see this enormous improvement. Because clearly the work you're doing is working.
But there are different groups of kids too.
There are.
And they struggle, those first graders, well, this is Owatton Creek, but it's different groups of kids. You can't say that they go from first grade and then in second grade they're doing great. You know what I mean?
Subtests are different as well, like we said. So in kindergarten, you're, the students are working within a different group of subtests and then in first grade and then in second grade. So to, to what you had asked, like no amount of support and, and what we're doing is going to help solve our way out of a core problem. So we are targeting those areas right now. And while we are putting into place these action plans, our priority right now is going to be taking a look at, you know, as Dr. Haller said, what is happening in our first grade and how is it aligning with, with what assessments students are taking and what they're expected to be able to do by the time they leave that grade level.
So basically what I'm saying is like something, Acadia's is asking them to do something that they are not yet able to do. And we had to figure out what can we do, or what do we need to put in place so that they can do that? And I'm saying here too, like we can't compare, like hopefully, and it'll all like flush out in second grade, like it, it showed here, but we don't know that for sure.
With this data, we don't because it's a single subset. But if we looked at second grade's data last year and compared it head-to-head with first grade, you could then determine similarities and whether it's the subset or whether it's the core.
Yes.
Which I'm assuming is why you need data year over year so you can assess that.
Yes, yes. And the data that you're looking at now, like the future ready is something that's out there. It's published for all to see. This data, you don't, at this point in time in Pennsylvania, you do not have to give a universal screener. We choose to do that. We, we chose to start doing that because we, we know the impact that what happens in K one and two is going to have on all of the other grade levels. So we do warehouse this ourselves and we take a very close look at it because we know the impact that it's going to have later on. And, and we are just getting started and there are some areas to celebrate, as you can see. But we, we will not stop working until we identify what some of those other areas are that we need to, to continue to grow with our kids. Okay, I'm gonna turn it back over to Dr. Hoyt.
Can I just add that in the future, it would also maybe be helpful to include third grade Acadia's data? Because really the third graders right now, we don't know anything about them because we, they didn't take the PSSA yet either.
Okay.
Like, so like, like next time, like to include the third grade, that would, would hopefully be like an indicator of how they might do in the spring.
Sure, that makes a lot of sense and we can definitely do that. Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna go back into the presentation, Joe, which we're there. So again, bringing this back to the cycle of improvement, right? So obviously a lot of data presented to you, a lot of data presented to the community. And again, this is just a, a piece of it though, when we think about things. You know, we, we had the IU come in to do the, the surveys. That's a lot of the work that the, the school improvement teams are gonna be looking at to use that data to, to create their plans for their building. You know, and, and I will be supporting with them as they navigate it. Because as you can see, the needs for the buildings are different. Things that came up from the data are, are different, which you would expect. So there are certainly things that district-wide were, were pretty, were similar, but there were other things that were unique to each one. So they are going to work on that and then to put in their plan into place. And then from there, you see that after that, the next phase with that then is to get a gauge on how and what is working. We will get a new round of data in another year. We'll have more benchmark data. We will have more feedback from, from teachers. We'll have more observations in the classroom. And then from there, we will make our adjustments. And this is something that will just, again, no pun intended, be cyclical to continue to look at to make those improvements. You can move on, Joe. So for our focus areas. Broke these again to the three areas, math, language arts, and science here. You know, that professional development time that we have, those half-days, those full-days are really vital to be able to do some of this work. It is essential, you know, for, that's the time where we can get a lot of teachers together to be able to look at things from a global, local, granular level to make some decisions and action plans moving forward. Whether it is Acadia's or CDT or IXL or PSSA or Keystone or local assessment data, that, that, that time is absolutely essential for us to be able to do those. And, you know, even before I started working here, Dr. Haller had targeted those days to align for when, that were close to when we gave some of our screeners so that we would be able to create really time-sensitive action plans based upon that. We've been working really hard to create collaborative opportunities for vertical articulation, which is, means getting, you know, above and below grade levels together to look at curriculum, to look at data, to see, you know, if I'm an 11th grade teacher, what are some of the things that are going on in 10th grade that to be considered? What are some things that are occurring in a, a, a previous grade level content-wise, curricular-wise? To be able to do that, whether it's content, whether it's writing as well, to be able to make those decisions. Last year, we, we came to you saying that we were going to be putting in a new writing course in the junior high. We implement that this year in grade seven and eight. And very satisfied with the progress of that course thus far with what we're doing. Writing is, is an area of focus. We're gonna be looking at K to 12. But this is a, for us, a great pathway to help to build a writer. Our high school language arts department and chair has been working with the junior high to help build that course. And we're really excited to see where things go with that. We've also, you know, Becky has probably been the most, I will say, anytime there's an update with Senate Bill 801 is, is on that, more than anybody I've ever met in my life. And as that changes, she lets us know. So that we are doing what we can to be as proactive as possible for that, so that we have plans in place. But, you know, we, we have the functions of structured literacy in our district. And the district was proactive with some of these things. You know, whereas some other districts right now have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do, but the work that we have to do is to fine-tune some things. Whereas many others are starting from, from a grassroots perspective. For mathematics again, again, similar to what I said with the LA, is really given that professional development time that's focused with department leaders, with myself, with Dr. Alcaro, going in to ask questions, to, you know, give perspectives on data, to build data plans, action plans, specifically on instructional strategies there within the classroom. We're really trying to get teachers to talk about teaching, you know, and to open up those opportunities for collaboration and, and, and being able to be supported within, you know, whatever questions that they have with regards to it. We've also re, redefined how we're using DreamBox and IXL at our junior high level for, for math. We've been asking the teachers to give with something called the diagnostic, which helps to see the progress of students and how they're doing with regards to the standards and skills in the classroom. We've been trying to use DreamBox. DreamBox helps to develop a path for students based upon how they did on their benchmark. But DreamBox and IXL also have the ability for you to customize the learning experience. So we've been, you know, working with teachers to say, if your current benchmark data is saying that some kids have this need, you can add some of those skills to DreamBox and IXL to help build that customized pathway for kids, to help them grow and achieve. For science, last year we spent a lot of time on working to implement the new STEEL standards. This year, it's been giving them opportunities to get a gauge on how things are going with those standards, whether it's the use of mystery science at our elementary level, our resources at the secondary level. Our, our librarians have been doing a lot of work with cross-curricular STEEL standards, with doing things with regards to STEM coding and robotics in library classes, which are, those are, robotics standards are part of the STEEL standards, which is really exciting to see with some of our robotics and doing coding. But, you know, this first year of implementation is gonna take some time. So we're reevaluating how we're doing things with regards to the STEEL standards and phenomena-based instruction in the classroom. You can move on to the next slide. So looking ahead, so where, where are we going from here and what are we doing? So, you know, based upon our data, as I mentioned, you know, this is the very, this coming year is gonna be the first year of our new comprehensive plan. So it's really going to help us to hone in, to really look at how we're performing against that third grade math, seventh grade math and graduation rate per what our recommendations were for the comprehensive plan. We are, in addition to curriculum, we're constantly reviewing our resources for effectiveness. You are going to see that at the next month meeting, I'll be bringing to the board some resources for, that are budgeted for consideration. We will be moving away, the recommendation is to move away from our current junior high language arts core resource and move with a new resource that's more aligned to what's expected. The teachers had a group together and looked at different resources and the one that they were selected, that they selected were very satisfied with, as were we. So we'll be bringing that to the board. Additionally, we'll be bringing to the board next month, the district has been using CPM math historically in grades six, seven, and eight in Algebra I. CPM is a very outdated resource. It's also a resource that's being potentially depreciated. And there are concerns about some alignment there. So we are going, we are using already Big Ideas as a core resource in our Algebra II and above in high school math. We're gonna be bringing to the board next month to move in the direction of using Big Ideas in grades seven all the way through the high school so that we can create a very cohesive resource for our students in math for grade seven through the high school. I do believe that that resource, using different resources along the way definitely has an impact when it comes to achievement in math because those resources use different language sometimes, they use different strategies. And I do believe that this is gonna be something that's going to help with that. And another thing that, it came to our attention over the last couple of months in, in doing work with DreamBox and, and the publisher that currently provides our elementary math resource, which is Investigations, also a very outdated resource. The company that owns that, Savas, is creating their own math resource. And because of that and the, the number of few districts that use Investigations in the country, let alone area, we are not confident in them being able to support that program much longer. We definitely know that we'll be able to use it next year. But we will be investigating and researching a new math K to six resource next year with the goal of implementing a new K to six math resource in the year 26, 27. Which will be a substantial change, but I believe it's a change in the right direction. A lot of the resources that are out there that are K to six are a lot more coherent. They're a lot more aligned. They're a lot more updated with regards to expectations. But, you know, we, we don't want to be giving something to teachers that, you know, all of a sudden to say, hey, guess what, we're not supporting you anymore with this or you can't use this anymore and, and be in that situation. So we will be talking to you more about that, but we're excited to, to move into the direction with that. Additionally, we are going to, you know, we just did the school calendar, continuing to look at that professional development time to really target specific grade areas, grade levels, content areas, to make those action plans for the state assessments that come up in the spring, but also in the future as well as kids then navigate to a new grade level next year. And then we also will be taking a look based upon DEVOPAR recommendations, the consultant that's been working on the high school schedule, to, to decide what needs and such do we need to put in place, knowing what our, our data is from the academic side and what some of their recommendations are as well. So these are all things that are part of the- So these are all things that are part of this, going to be part of this cycle of improvement, Phase Two, in developing our plan and putting that implementation into place. So we have a lot of work to do, but it's work worth doing. We're very excited with this. And this is an effort, I will tell you, that is, what I love about this effort is that the teaching and learning team, although you see Becky sitting here and Joe, and I make Kristi a de facto member of the teaching and learning team, but is also a, we work hand in hand with our special ed supervisors, and they are a part of our teaching and learning team. So everything that we do is K to 12, and it's for all students. And when we develop our professional development, we're doing it all together as a group. When we're making decisions about student data, we're doing it as a group. And with regards to the concerns that we have, I don't believe there's any maliciousness going on with our teachers in this district where they're intentionally not teaching things. I've been in enough classrooms where I really think that they're, you know, they know and they're doing and they're working as hard as they can with their students, where I think we have to help them is to continue and improve is what is expected on these assessments and how can we help them with that. But I do think, and I'm very proud of the work that our teachers are doing in this district, but we all have an understanding as teachers and administrators and building and central that we have a lot of work to do to improve, and we are going to do it. So that being said, that's our presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
I do have a question. So as it relates to the Keystone, so if a student does not meet the criteria to achieve a passing score for a Keystone, are they able to take it again?
They are able to take that again. They can choose to take the entire Keystone assessment, or they could also, the Keystone assessment is based off two modules. They could choose to just reassess on the module that they did not get the 1500, 1500 is the passing score on, so.
And that, they have to wait a year to take that again, I assume?
They don't have to wait a year. They would just have to wait for, what we do is, the retesting would occur during when we set up our, like, because we're, we have assessments that we offer in the December-January window, and we have assessments that are offered in the spring window. There's also a summer window as well, too.
And so if a student does not meet that criteria and they have to take it again, do we have resources or some kind of a remediation pathway during when they get those results to when they take it again that can help them to get a better score, to feel more comfortable in taking that exam the second time?
Yes, so the teachers are aware of the students who do not achieve that, and one of the things we look at is, is, for example, take students who aren't successful in Algebra I, right? When students go into Algebra II, Algebra II, a lot of Algebra II in the beginning is a foundational review of some Algebra I concepts and extending some things as well. So that helps, that, almost every district in the Commonwealth uses Algebra II in that as a way to support students with that. But they also, you know, do provide some guidance to the students, administration and such are aware of what they are, and we have things that we can provide the students. Same thing with language arts, when they go to the next language arts class, that certainly, because you're doing a lot more with extensions of reading and writing and text-dependent analysis and such, there's extensions for support within there. The hardest one to remediate and provide is biology, because when you leave biology, you know, you go into another course. So, you know, we look at those students, we try to figure out ways, you know, the high school has put in a place, they have, where they have the supportive study halls, you know, and they work at. I could tell you that the high school knows down to, when you look at the Act 158, which is the high school graduation, basically flow chart, they know exactly who those students are and they put plans in place for those kids.
So if a, if a family, if a student took Algebra I, they go into Algebra II, family maybe is a little apprehensive about that because student maybe wasn't as successful as they'd hoped in Algebra I, now they're taking a higher level class, and the family wants additional remediation support, and they reach out to the district, what other resources would we offer other than Algebra II to make sure that they can get those needs?
Yes, I mean, we have resource and such from the previous Algebra I teacher that we use through Schoology. We have a lot of what are known OER resources, Open Educational Resources, there's a lot of free texts and such that are out there. We have tools that we use, something called Castle Learning Software, which helps the pools practice assignments. We have something called Albert I O as well that helps the pools practice assignments and such there. So it's really, it's a collaborative effort to be able to provide those resources, and then we can use Schoology as a means to provide students and parents with those.
And a family would start at, they say, the school counselors to get those resources or to ask for further resources?
So I think the best would be the first, talk to their classroom teacher, their math teacher first, and then, you know, from there, you know, the math teacher could work with both the school counselor and administration and work from that pathway.
I appreciate that. Last thing, I just wanted to commend you guys for this. This has been very helpful, at least for me. One of the things that I do appreciate is the continuity and the dedication to a long-term plan. I think that, you know, getting a plan, waiting a whole year, and then just completely doing a 180 and changing plan is never a good way to do things. Having a long-term goal and a long-term plan and then reassessing is great. I think we've needed it here for a long time, so I applaud the effort of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did, I should also want to say, like, I really do appreciate, like, I really feel the team effort and the real, it's a real thought-out process now of what you presented to us, so thank you for that. I did have a question about our transient population. When we look from grade level to grade level, Miss Maybe could answer maybe some of John's why question. How many students do we have coming in and leaving so that maybe when they test in fourth grade, it's not the same kids that took the, actually took the test in third grade, and now they're in, it's a new group of kids? So we don't really know how they're doing. Like, what is our transient rate there? Do we know at all?
I couldn't give you an exact rate, but I can tell you with 100% accuracy that we do not have the same students from year to year. You know, I think one of the things that really sticks out to me is when you look at our Lorraine numbers and the population that has come into Lorraine and the amount of new students that we have come from there. You know, so we see transancy at every grade level all the time, and when they walk in that door, if a student walks in tomorrow, we are going to welcome them, we're going to do whatever we can to figure out where they're at, what do they need? But ultimately, if they're in that course, they're taking that assessment, whether they've never been in school before, or they've, were in school in North Dakota, or they were, you know, from a neighboring district in our Commonwealth, so. But yeah, I mean, everybody, everybody is dealing with transancy, and I don't know if Dr. Haller wants to say anything else more about this, but it is, I think, and I've been in education over 20 years now, I've never seen transancy at the level that it is now in districts, and I saw that when I worked at the IU, working with other districts, so.
Josh is right. We are seeing a lot of transancy in the districts across all six buildings that we hadn't seen previously. There's a lot of factors for it, but if you are in the community and you'll know that we monthly attach our enrollment numbers, and you can see from our enrollment numbers, they're increasing and decreasing, increasing, decreasing. So we are hovering still around 3,800 students in the district, but in the next month, we could very easily go up to 3,900, 3,900, or we could go to 3,700. Like, that's how fast that this is happening. We also have seen an uptick in our students who are homeless. We have a number of students, more so than we've ever had in the district before. That number continues to increase. And so when we are looking at various programs and looking at resources, that's one of the considerations, because getting back to the K2 data and specifically Foundations. Foundations is one of those programs that not only do you have to learn what is in, what they're teaching you as far as the sounds, but you also have to learn how that program works, because there's tapping, there's, there's a lot of elements to Foundations. So if we have a student that comes to us in second grade and they haven't had the basis of Foundations in kindergarten or first grade, we also have to catch them up on how the program works and then also teach them the skills. So one of the things that we've been looking at is looking at a program that lends itself more to students, whether they're with us starting in kindergarten or they just come to us in second grade, because what we're finding in our assessments, when we are looking at our student data, is that there are districts that are, kids are coming to us from that they don't have any phonics, they don't have any phonics at all. And truth be told, not every student learns by phonics. There are some students that just are able to come in and pick up reading very quickly, but that's, that's not natural. Reading doesn't come naturally to students. Learning to read is a very challenging skill. So it's, there's a lot of factors with this, but we are definitely seeing an uptick in transancy, and I believe that that's something that we'll continue to see happening in this district as well as, unfortunately, increase.
Dr. Haller, would you say it's fair to say that with, in the addition and increase of potential construction of apartments, that that will likely also exacerbate the transancy issue that you're seeing?
I believe so. Having been a resident here for 26 years, 20, actually 28 years, when you look at Owatonna Creeks data and you compare it to Jacksonwald and Lorraine, the one factor that's very different from those other two buildings is Owatonna is mostly homes, single-family homes. We have the least amount of apartments really in that area, whereas Lorraine does have a high number of apartments in their, in their area, which is fine. Having apartments isn't an issue, but any one of us who started out life in an apartment knows that the end goal was to eventually get into a house. So that is just like the beginning of where we're starting. Because there's a housing market crisis right now, we have more and more families that are leaning and going to apartments and then eventually moving into houses, maybe in another part of the district, or moving out of the district because that's where they can afford a home. So apartments are apartments, but apartments in and of itself is typically transitional housing.
Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Yes. Sorry, Mr. Fiedler's on.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to offer my congratulations to you, Josh, and your whole team, Kristi and Becky, and others who were involved on the writing course that will be offered in junior high school. As you know, I taught writing at the community college for six years and saw examples of not only poor writing, but students who couldn't, students who were graduates of the 18 public school districts in Berks County plus the two parochial schools, students who did not literally know how to write a sentence. I don't know how they graduated not knowing how to write a sentence, but maybe this will go a long way toward correcting that problem. So is this, just one question about that course. Is this a required course or is this an elective course?
It is a required course.
Wonderful. Well, I wish you all success with that, and I hope that an emphasis on writing continues through grade 12. What I've learned from talking with teachers, past and present, is that writing is emphasized from K to six, but then kind of falls to the wayside between seven and 12. So I hope that this is a harbinger of good things to come for our student writers. Thank you.
We do use, it was known as a Peels framework at the high school. It was actually our high school, like I said, as I mentioned, our high school language arts department, who has actually been working with our social studies department on this Peels framework. Mr. Campbell and his admin team have really been on a wonderful job and an effective job getting these departments together to really help to integrate writing. And, you know, Mr. Brown was a big proponent of helping to get this writing course in the junior high school as well. So, you know, I appreciate the thank you, but there's a, there are a lot more people involved in helping these things go, and I'm very appreciative of them, so, thank you.
I hear your report. Thank you.
And I just, I would like to recognize our building principals because they're actually the ones doing the work with their teachers and then also all the work of our teachers, because we have really kind of changed up what we're doing here within the last several years with, in putting in that cycle of improvement. That cycle of improvement framework is not something that districts typically use. It's something that the state makes you use when you have been identified as a district that has significant needs. But because of what we believe is the power of a framework like that, to constantly look at your students, look at student data, reevaluate your resources, which is what I hope that you heard today, that we looked at our assessment data, we're looking at our instruction and of course, looking at our resources, and then making changes based on that, that takes a lot of work on the part of those administrators to lead that work with our teachers and then all the work of our teachers to go ahead and look at those, that data and then make those changes. And also, part of that is it lends to our teachers that voice of looking at their student data and then saying, this is, this is what I need, which is where we kind of, we have gotten to with our English resources, which is where we've gotten to with needing to look at our math resources, because our teachers can be in those classrooms every day, as they are, working very hard, looking at student data, but if those resources aren't aligning to what we're expecting kids to do on this assessment, whether you agree with the assessment or not, that's, that's the measure that we have, then we need to backtrack and make sure that the teachers have the resources that they, that they need to do their job successfully. And that's not something that we, as a district, have been doing regularly because we didn't have a framework in place to allow us to do that type of supportive work. So thank you to the board also for allowing us to do all this, because there's been a lot of legwork in the backend to be able to get to this point. And while Josh, Josh said, there's, there's celebration here because even though we're not making what the state targeted us to make, we are in most areas above the state average, and that is something that is, because of the work of the administrators and the teachers, and that's just a jumping off point for us. So it, we are going to continue to work to be above the state average and then meet the target that the state has, has set for us. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Me, so me. Okay. Next, yes, there is, just for your enjoyment, the enrollment report, and then also a list of field trips that are within the 60-mile radius. You can see anything there in bold, has been added since the count. And then if there's no questions, we will move on to the Education Committee Consent Agenda. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following Education Committee items, one through five. Again, anything in bold was added after the count.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
That's all for me.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Personnel Committee with Dr. Herring.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves and ratifies the following personnel items. Please keep in mind, any items in bold have been added or changed since the committee of the whole meeting. Items one, two, three, four, and five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
That's everything.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Herring. Finance and Audit Committee, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mill. Before I do the consent agenda, does anybody need anything pulled out or wish to have anything pulled out? Okay. Then we'll be voting on the consent agenda. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the following finance and audit items, numbers one through five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Do you want me to take the next one?
I was going to say, if you don't mind, that'd be great.
Sure. Facilities and Transportation Committee, Dr. Battler. It is recommended the School Board Directors approve the following facility and transportation items, which is the resolution for the solar grant application is all that's on here.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Can we have clarification as to what this is?
Mr. Fike?
This is just authorizing Kristi and I to sign the application that is due at the end of the month. This is not authorizing any projects, it's just to put into the state, state requires that the board is backed, has backing of putting in the application. state requires that the board is backed, has backing of putting in the application. So that's basically it.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Policy Committee with Mrs. Bloom.
It is recommended that the Board of Directors approves the following policies, numbers 011, 317.1, 803, 805, 805.1, 805.2, 806, and 807.
And these are for a first read.
These are for the first reading.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Bloom. All right, moving on, athletics and extracurricular activities with Mr. Odom.
Just to report, winter sports are still going on strong. Right now, all the sports teams are looking forward to a great postseason ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Odom. ECF with Mrs. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. ECF would like to send a big thank you to North Star United Methodist Church for their extremely generous donation of $5,300 to our Student Outreach Initiative. This donation was made possible by their very giving and supportive congregation during the Christmas Eve church offering. This is the fourth year that North Star UMC has donated this offering to ECF's Student Outreach Program, and we can't thank them enough for their role in helping students who need a hand up. We are already hard at work for our first two events of 2025. On Saturday, April 5th, we will be hosting our first order run 5K and walk, followed by a one-mile fun run at Trout Run Sports Complex. This event is to celebrate a Watton Creek 4th grade teacher, Mrs. Elise Ockembach, who qualified for the Boston Marathon. Join us to run with Mrs. Ockembach as she makes one of her last practice runs with us at Trout Run Sports Complex before competing in the Boston Marathon on April 21st, 2025. We are also starting a plan for our Fourth Annual Food Truck Festival, which will be held on Friday, May 16th, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the senior high school. We are working on our food truck and vendor signups now. For more information about both events, you can find them on our website at extraeducationfoundation.org or our Facebook page. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Mr. Fidler, do you have anything for the Berks Career and Technology Center, JOC, or the BCIU Board of Directors?
I, I do, for the BCTC. The two winter open houses are coming up for students in grades 5 through 8 and their families. The first one is on February 5th at the East Campus in Olley, and the second one is at the West Campus in Leesport on February 11th. These are great opportunities for kids in grades 5 through 8 to get a, an early picture of what the BCTC can offer them, and I'm hoping if I forward this to the right person, I'm hoping we can perhaps post this information on our website, and perhaps even have the teachers in these grades remind our students as we get closer to these two dates. But these are annual events and a great window into what BCTC can do for our kids. The other item, BCIU, nothing to report beyond the information I circulated earlier this week.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Anything else?
I believe, Mr.
That's it, that's it.
Mr. Campbell, I believe you, you inform the students of the open houses for BCTC every year, correct? So that's, John, that does get done every year.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. All right, moving on to Legislative PSBA Liaison, Mrs. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. As far as PSBA liaison, I have submitted all the digests and updates from PSBA. I'll be attending their liaison training actually tomorrow after noon. And in legislative news, obviously, the session reconvened on January 7th. The Education Committee Chair is Senator Culver, and on February 4th, 2025, Governor Shapiro will deliver his 2025 Budget Address, which will outline his major policy priorities for the year, so that should be interesting. I did look up some additional bills and amendments that were forthcoming with this new session, and the following have been introduced, which I thought were appropriate to highlight. House Bill 11 is a House Bill introducing mandatory cursive handwriting, and that will require instruction in cursive handwriting or joined italics to be taught in every elementary, public, and private school establishment in the Commonwealth, and I do believe we do that now, correct? Okay. And House Bill 25, that is extending school budget deadlines and state budget impasses. This legislation would increase the days from 15 to 30 for school districts to adopt budgets following a State General Appropriations Act, and from 20 days to 35 days to levy and assess property taxes.
Does that do anything for us, Mr. Fike? Sorry.
Actually, it's gonna hurt the tax.
I saw a gigantic grin on your face over there.
Because it actually will hurt the taxpayers, because either they have a shorter discount period, or a shorter penalty period, or a shorter straight pay period, because they have to become delinquent December 31st, because then this county and local taxes come into effect. So if they extend the time that we send out the bills, it gives the taxpayers less time to pay them.
Good to know. Thank you.
Okay, another one. House Bill 41, Playoff Reform for the PIAA. This was introduced and referred to Intergovernmental Affairs and Operations on January 10th. This legislation would allow PIAA to establish separate playoff systems and championships for athletics for boundary schools, which is public, and non-boundary schools, which is considered for charter, parochial, and private. So that's an interesting one. Okay, House Bill 203 was introduced to add Veterans Day as a school holiday. And lastly, just wanted to reference the January 9th, 2025, federal court, District Court in Kentucky issued an order declaring the 2024 Title IX final ruling and corresponding regulations to be vacated, declaring that the regulations violated the Constitution. The rule offered protections for the first time for LGBTQI+ students and employees at federally funded schools and colleges, including prohibiting discrimination based on gender identity and sexual orientation. This ruling resurrects the 2020 Title IX ruling. Anyone like to address that? No? No comments? Okay. No? Okay. I know Pennsylvania has their own. Yes.
Yes, it really hasn't changed anything for this district.
That is it?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. It, it, no was brought up during the data presentation, I was just curious, has there been any recent developments with Senate Bill 801 in terms of how it affects the district or anything that, that we're doing? And, you know, it, just as I was bringing it up, I was thinking, you know, Mrs. Bush might have an answer for that, that she could come up to the podium and speak to us about, so it's, it's so great you're here, thank you.
I do have an answer for that.
Oh, great, thank you.
In October, that bill was signed by Governor Shapiro, and it is now, there's two parts to the approach that we're looking at right now. The first thing that we are doing is PDE is establishing a council of 20 people who are going to consult with them, and that council's main role is to create three lists that are rooted in evidence-based practices for kindergarten through 3rd grade. So the first list that they are being tasked to create is a list of evidence-based curricula that they're recommending, rooted in the science of reading, and that follow the structured literacy practices. The second list that they are creating is a list of professional development training that our teachers across Pennsylvania would receive, also grounded in structured literacy. And the third list that they're creating is a list of high-quality universal screeners, and as you know, we already have one of those. We don't know what is going to be on any of those lists, so we will wait and see, but the things that we are doing now, as you just heard during our data presentation, are leading us in the direction of being able to meet the requirements of that, of that bill. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. While I don't have a specific report, I do want to make sure that we call out the efforts of St. Lawrence Borough and Exeter Township to make sure that they have been getting the roads cleared. It is a tireless effort when it snows, especially when it's followed by these freezing temperatures, and we know that they've been out there, I saw them all day today, so certainly appreciate all that. And then along with that, I'll save you the time later when you ask if anybody has anything, I want to call it the same thank you to our, our crews here in Exeter at the district. We talk a lot about, you know, the school buses and safety of school buses, but, you know, those kids also have to walk on our property, people have to park in our parking lots, we have to make sure everything gets cleared off. I mean, I came into LaSh today and everything is, is wonderful. I was the transportation director for the sledding hill today, and so I got to drive through campus twice, and they've done a really excellent job considering the conditions, so thank you to all of them as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Next will be public comment for non-agenda items. We have no one signed up unless someone would like to come up and speak. And there is no one. Are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time, except for Mr. Morgan, who decided to go before anyone else?
If I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to say good luck to our own Exeter Unified Bachi team. The games are supported by the Special Olympics, and I believe the second game will be this Thursday. I'm sure you can find the information somewhere on our website, so you should come out and cheer on our team, because they're awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Mel, we should also congratulate the junior high people in attendance for Mr. Mel's longest meeting yet, so.
Yes, I would like to thank the, the, the junior high staff for coming out and, and sitting through this meeting and just, they all look really happy to be here, so just want to thank you. Thank you very much. Any other board members like to be heard? All right, our next meeting will be our committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday, February 4th at 6:00 PM. There will be an executive session immediately following the adjournment of this meeting to discuss personnel in relation to support staff negotiations and also active litigation. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting. Hearing none, meeting is adjourned.